I call the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment to order. Will take attendance. Would each board member and alternate please signify if, well, whether or not they're present. All those who are present, tell us you're present, and whether or not anybody's in the room with you, please.
I think in the past, you've called people out by name, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Patterson, are you there?
I am present, Mr. Al Patterson, and my wife is in the upstairs somewhere.
Dan Nash, are you there?
Present, I'm alone.
Okay. Mr. McDonough? Are you muted, or are you not there?
Looks like he's muted and...
I was muted. I'm present and alone.
All right. Mr. Katz, are you present?
Jeremy, it's Tim. If you're on the phone, try pressing star six to unmute yourself.
Okay, I pressed star six, and I am still present and alone.
Ms. Mercer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I had to unmute.
Mr. Perez? Going once. Going twice. All right. Mr. Newlove?
I am here, and I am alone, but not sad.
Great. One, two, three, four, five, six. Who have I missed?
I think you have everybody. Everyone is here except Jonathan.
All right. Mr. Corwin, could you review for us the procedures under New Hampshire RSA 91A, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin from the Planning Department. I just have a few opening remarks that are fairly similar to what you've been hearing if you've participated in other Lebanon Lanes Board meetings. So I appreciate your patience as we go through these. It'll just take a minute or two. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2020-04, the Lebanon Zoning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, the city of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the zoning board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the zoning board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the June 1st, 2020 zoning board meeting. Instructions on how to attend are provided on the webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who is participating, all speakers, including board members, are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. Board members do not need to spell their first and last names, but we do ask other speakers to do so. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the button on the middle lower portion of the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press star six to unmute yourself. If anyone has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, you can email me at corwin@lebanonnh.gov. You can also use the chat function on Microsoft Teams. Please use the chat room for access or technical questions only. If we can, if I can provide technical assistance, I will. I'll try to do so, but it's more likely than not I will not be able to do so. However, it's good to keep an eye on how many people are having access during the course of the meeting and for future reference, if there's anything we can do to prevent that from happening, it's good to have a log of what's going on. So please let us know, even if there's not something we can necessarily do about it tonight. In the event that we experience widespread technical difficulties over the course of the meeting and are unable to continue, we will adjourn and reschedule for a later time. Please note that in any case, the public hearings tonight, with the exception of Agenda Item 4A, will be continued to special meeting of the zoning board to be held on Monday, June 15th at 7:00 PM. This will allow for additional public testimony in the event that anyone is unable to access the meeting, which we won't know until the meeting is concluded. Any such questions or comments should be sent to... Sorry. Any questions, any such questions or comments should be sent to planning@lebanonnh.gov as soon as possible after the hearing. For additional information, please call the Planning and Development Department at 603-448-1457. Just a few more notes. All votes this evening will be taken by roll call vote. Please note that there may be a delay between the time that something is said and when you hear it at home. Please be patient as we try and manage that delay. Again, we ask that you not use the chat function at all for anything unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. And again, even in that case, there may not be anything I can do about it this evening. Finally, note that this meeting is being recorded. It will be available on the city's website, lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to the chair. You have to unmute yourself, Bill.
People keep muting me. I'm not used to that. Thank you, Mr. Corwin. The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes for May 4th. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, this is Vice Chair Mercer. I move to approve the minutes for May 4th.
Is there a second?
This is Dan Nash. I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Any corrections, additions, subtractions?
Dan Nash, I have a couple.
Go ahead, Mr. Nash.
Page 2, line 18. After the word Hitchcock Clinic Lot 10, I think there should be two words in there for A. F-O-R, space, A. The planning board approved taking a portion of Hitchcock Lot 10 for a parking lot. So the words for A are missing.
All right.
And then on page 12, on line 34, the word unanimously should be removed.
Yes, it should.
That's it for me.
Are there any other corrections, additions, amendments, subtractions? Hearing none. All those... Well, let's do it this way. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Nash, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson? Mr. Patterson, unmute yourself. All right, we'll come back to Mr. Patterson. Mr. Newlove?
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. I voted yes. I don't know why. I'm showing unmuted, but obviously it wasn't.
Mr. Newlove?
I vote yes.
Mr. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes unanimously with the corrections indicated by Mr. Nash. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May 19th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Could I please interrupt for a second? It's Linda. I have seven, I have seven voting people on the first...
You're, you're, yeah, that's, that's my fault. Let's see. We have four regular members, so Mr. Newlove would be the voting member on that particular motion for May 4th.
I have five regular members voting.
Mr. Perez isn't here.
Okay.
So it's four regular members and Mr. Newlove.
Thank you.
All right. On this motion for May 19th, Mr. Katz, I'll appoint you as a voting member. Assuming we have a motion, is there a motion regarding the May 19th minutes?
This is Dan Nash. I'll move that we approve the minutes of the 19 May 20 meeting.
Is there a second?
This is Jeremy Katz. I'll second it.
All right. Is there any discussion? Any corrections, amendments, subtractions? Hearing none. We'll call the motion. Mr. Patterson?
I'm going to abstain from it. I was not present.
All right. Ms. Mercer?
Also abstaining. I was not present.
Mr. Nash?
I vote yes.
Mr. Katz, or I'm sorry, Mr. Newlove?
I have to abstain. I wasn't at the meeting either.
Did I appoint Mr. Newlove or Mr. Katz?
Katz.
Mr. Katz?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. All right, the motion passes. We're going to have a slight change in the agenda. The first item we're going to deal with is the public hearing that's continued for May 19th, 2020. Jerome Yarosevich, 328 Poverty Lane, Tax Map 188, Lot 47, Zoned RL1. The subject property is improved with a one-family dwelling partly located within the 100-foot high-value wetland buffer established by Article 4, Section 401.2.2b of the zoning ordinance. Applicant proposes to replace an existing nine-and-a-half-foot by 12-and-a-half-foot attached sunroom with a new 16-by-16-foot attached sunroom resulting in an approximately 95 additional square feet addition within the wetland buffer. In order to construct the new sunroom, the applicant requests a special exception pursuant to pursuant to Section 401.5. This public hearing has been closed, and we are on the deliberation and decision.
Mr. Chair, this is Tim.
Yes.
Just to clarify, we continue, the board continued the public hearing until this evening in order to allow, yep.
Did we have any additional input?
The Planning and Development Department has not received any additional public comment.
All right. At this time, then, I will close the public hearing and move on to deliberation and decision. Last month, or two weeks ago, Mr. Katz and Mr. McDonough, you sat on this hearing together with Mr. Nash and myself, and I'll appoint, well, appoint. As between Ms. Mercer and Mr. Patterson, do either of you have strong feelings one way or the other about who wants to sit on this hearing?
I do not. As long, like I indicated earlier, I would just as soon stand down if we can do that.
All right. Then, Ms. Mercer, you'll be the fifth member of this hearing.
I have read the application, the notes, the meeting minutes from the last meeting, as well as the conservation commission's information, so I feel comfortable with that.
Good. So, Mr. McDonough, do you have any comments about this application? Opinions, questions?
I have, I have no comments. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Katz?
I also have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Nash?
No comments.
Ms. Mercer?
No comments here.
And I have none. Is there a motion?
I'll be glad to read it if you'd like.
Go ahead, Mr. Nash.
On May 19th and June 1st, 2020, at duly noticed meetings, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment there appeared Jerome Yarosevich regarding 328 Poverty Lane, Tax Map 188, Lot 47, Zoned RL1. The subject property is improved with a one-family dwelling partly located within the 100-foot high-value wetland buffer established by Article 4, Section 401.2.2b of the zoning ordinance. Applicant proposes to replace an existing nine-and-a-half-by-12-and-a-half-foot attached sunroom with a new 16-by-16 attached sunroom resulting in plus or minus 95 additional square feet within the wetland buffer. In order to construct the new sunroom, the applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Section 401.5. Findings of fact, we have seven pre-printed, and I'd like to add number eight, that no one spoke for or against the application. Conclusions of law, as a result of the above findings of fact and based on testimony given, application materials presented, and supporting documents submitted, the board concludes the following with respect to the special exception criteria set forth in 401.5 of the zoning ordinance. One, the use for which the exception is sought cannot feasibly, after consideration of all alternatives, be carried out on a portion or portions of the lot which are outside the wetlands conservation district. Two, due to the provisions of the Wetland Conservation District as applied to the particular characteristic setting and environment of the property, the lot cannot be reasonably used for any of the uses permitted or allowed by special exception without some form of special exception under this section. Three, the design and the construction of the proposed use is consistent with the purpose and intent of 401.1, A, B, and C of the zoning ordinance. Inadequate conservation measures will be taken to mitigate the detrimental effects of the proposed use on the natural function of the wetlands. Four, the criteria set forth in 401.5D relates to pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines, and therefore is not applicable. Five, the proposed use will not create a hazard to individual or public health, safety, and welfare due to the loss of wetland, the contamination of groundwater, or any other reason. Six, the project is capable of complying with all state and federal wetlands and wetland permitting requirements. Seven, the project is capable of conforming to all existing best management practices as referenced in Appendix A of the zoning ordinance and will be implemented in a way which conforms to those practices. Now therefore be it resolved, the Lebanon Zoning Board of Adjustment on this first day of June 2020. Hereby grants, the requested special exception is set forth above and per testimony, plans, and materials submitted and per the following conditions. One, the applicant shall obtain a building permit.
Is there a second?
This is Jeremy Katz. I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? No questions, no comments? All right, then we'll call the motion. Mr. McDonough?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Katz?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Nash?
I vote in favor.
Ms. Mercer?
I vote in favor.
And I vote in favor. The motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing in the matter of Nicholas and Rebecca Katamis, 45 School Street, Tax Map 107, Lot 113, Zoned R2. The location of the existing home extends across the side lot line shared with 39 School Street and is therefore non-conforming to the minimum side yard requirements in the R2 district. Applicants propose to construct a three-story addition to be located approximately 12 feet from the side lot line. To permit the expansion of a non-conforming structure, the applicants request a special exception pursuant to Article 7, Section 703 of the zoning ordinance. Is the applicant present?
Yes, I am here.
Who's, who is this?
This is Nick Katamis speaking, K-A-T-T-A-M-I-S.
Mr. Katamis, could you please tell us something about your project and what it is you'd like us to do for you?
Absolutely. So we live at 45 School Street. Yeah, I want to make a couple corrections. It is a two-family. It's not a multifamily, so that was a mistake on our application. It's a two-family. We live in one of the units. We have a growing family, and we're hoping to expand our square footage to give us a little more room to live in. As part of that, we would like to build, and this is the next correction, a two-and-a-half-story addition, so not a three-story addition, but a two-and-a-half-story addition connected to the back portion of our house. As you can see on the image that you projected there, you can see our structure, the original structure, the house. You can also see the lot line in red. It's a nice, uniform-looking triangle. And the back portion of our house, as you can see, is on my neighbor Jeff Cox's property. And because of that, based on where we intend to put the addition, one thing you can see on that, that image is that it's 12 feet away. The minimum distance of the addition is 12 feet away from the property line. So we obviously cannot maintain 15 feet distance, and we can't meet the 15-foot setback. Around the remaining portion of that addition, it's all within the 15-foot setback, so it's kosher. It's just that one portion. The approximate dimensions of the addition are shown there. It's about 20 feet by about 25 feet. It would make the house form an L. There are also some images on the next slide, if you go down one more. These try to highlight where the addition will be relative to the house, looking at, you know, real images. So on the left, you see a side view of the house. On the ground, I tried to project the approximate footprint in yellow where the addition would go. And then where that ties in with the house is where I placed vertical yellow dash lines. So that's where the addition would tie into the original house. And then, again, the height of that addition would be the same height as the front portion of the house, which is a two-and-a-half-story house, and I believe the height is between 29 and 30 feet. So we'd be maintaining the same height, and we would be nowhere near the limit of 35 feet. We intend, if this goes through, to use the same kind of building materials that are there, so it's our hope that the addition will look like it was, it was intended to be there. It won't be some hodgepodge addition with, you know, different siding and different windows and different roofing. But that, I hope that explains everything. If there's, if there's questions, I'd be glad to field them.
Is that it, Mr. Katamis?
Give me one second. I believe, yes, I believe that is all.
All right. For this hearing, let's see. Mr. Newlove will appoint you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So, questions or comments for the applicant, beginning with you, Mr. Newlove?
Can I ask a question from Mr. Katamis? Sorry if I pronounced that wrong. In, in, in the addition, what, what type of rooms are you adding to the addition?
Yep. So we are looking to add, it would be, it would be a kitchen, one bathroom.
Yep.
And if my memory is correct, it would be two bedrooms.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Just a quick question for the homeowner. Reference the construction phase of that doing, due to tight quarters, have you, obviously you've, your neighbors are on board with this because it looks like the work area is pretty limited.
Yep. So, so the good news is, the, if you go back to that other, there was another graphic, I think you guys had up, that was sort of an aerial view, but I believe that all the addition work, based on our discussion with our contractor, shouldn't, shouldn't require any access through our neighbor Jeff Cox's yard. We should be able to do all, we should be able to access all of the construction from our driveway. Does that...
Yeah, no, that answered the question. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure.
I'd like to, I would like to jump in here. This is Jeff Cox, C-O-X, the neighbor at 39 School Street. And I agree, as far as I know, the access would be through the 45 School Street property. And Mr. Katamis and I have discussed this, and I'm on board with all of that.
Thank you for that.
All right. Mr. Nash, do you have any questions or comments?
I have none.
Ms. Mercer?
I have one question, just out of curiosity, more than anything. You talked about it being two-and-a-half stories, so that the addition will match the height of the roof line on the front part of the house. What about that central part of the house? Are you also going to build above that, or will that have a lower roof line there for that little center portion?
Yeah, so a portion of the center, a part of the center portion will remain at the same height.
Okay.
Except for the part that ties into the addition, that part will be raised to two-and-a-half stories.
Okay. I was just curious. That's my only question.
Mr. Katz?
Sorry.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. McDonough?
I have no questions. Thank you.
And I have no questions. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to be heard regarding this application, either in favor or against, or if you just have questions, one way or the other?
Just a reminder, if you're present and would like to speak, you'll need to unmute yourself through Teams, or if you're on the phone, press star six to unmute yourself.
Are you aware of anybody other than Mr. Cox, Mr. Corwin?
No, there's, there's quite a few people on the, on the Teams meeting tonight, but I don't believe anyone is here for that application, for the president application.
Mr. Cox, was there anything further you wish to add?
No, I believe I've asked the questions that I had needed to ask prior to this meeting, and I am in favor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to continue this hearing to our June 15th meeting?
This is Dan Nash. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it. Al Patterson?
All right. Mr. Newlove, how do you vote?
I vote yes, to extend, yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Nash?
I vote yes.
Ms. Mercer?
I vote yes to continue this.
And I will make it unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Katamis. We'll talk to you on June 15.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing in the matter of Johanna Sikati, 30 Little Heater Road, tax map 78, lot 61, zoned light industrial. Applicant proposes to remove the existing buildings and to construct a new building for proposed car wash use. Applicant requests a variance from Article 3, Section 303.3 of the zoning ordinance to allow the new building to be located 20 feet from the front line where a minimum of 40 feet is required. Mr. Nash?
I'd like to recuse myself.
Thank you. In that case, I will appoint Mr. Katz and Mr. McDonough, assuming no conflicts, to sit on this hearing. Is that okay?
It's fine with me. This is Paul McDonald.
Jeremy Katz, yes.
Thank you. Is anybody present for the applicant?
Good evening. This is Barry Schuster on behalf of Johanna Sikati. Am I coming in loud and clear?
Yes.
I'll proceed then. The application is pretty straightforward. This is a section, the Little Heater Road section is behind the truck stop. It's behind the Miller Volvo Volkswagen facility. It is, there's a cleaning company, a landscaping company, and this is one of the few remaining single-family houses in that little neighborhood. Yeah, thank you, Tim. And the proposal, and that, that house actually, where it exists currently, is very close to the tributary of Great Brook or Great Meandering Brook, whatever it's nominated at that point, or called nominated. But the proposal is to take down the house and construct a car wash that will be used in conjunction with the Miller dealership. Ms. Sikati is the principal of the Miller Volvo Volkswagen. In her individual name, she owns this property and would like to use it as a car wash for car wash, car detailing in conjunction with the dealership. In order to do that, taking down the house would require bringing the building forward toward the road and a 40-foot setback is required, but 20 feet is being provided. Given the low level of traffic through there and the water course in the back, the idea of bringing the building forward gets it away from the stream and there's no impediment to traffic by having the buildings closer to the road. The package, as submitted, does address the variance criteria. And I can certainly go through that quickly. I'm sure you've had a chance to look at it. But most of the variance, or at least the variance criteria, talk about public interest and spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice and the value of surrounding properties, and unnecessary hardship. And again, the unnecessary hardship frequently gets a lot of attention, but here we have the difficulty of having water in the background, wetland around. So, getting the buildings away from that more delicate area really does make sense and there's no impediment, and that's a rather unique aspect of the land. The surrounding, the properties, the value of the surrounding properties will not be affected. They're all commercial or most of them are commercial. This would make, this would eliminate the nonconforming use, which the house now is, and the car wash is a conditional use, but is a permitted conditional use. So, that would eliminate, by moving to a car wash, would eliminate the nonconforming use on the property. There will be no, the essential character of the neighborhood will not be affected and there's certainly no threat to public health, safety, or welfare by having a 20-foot setback rather than a 40-foot setback. This is not a major thoroughfare. It's effectively a dead-end road that comes down and Tim has got the arrow pointing there. And all of the properties or around there have, there are some residential, but mostly all commercial through there. So, the only traffic that goes down there is, would be going through to those other businesses. And the proposal is to have a driveway connector between this property and the auto dealership, which then reduces traffic even further. So, I'll leave it at that. If you have questions, I'd be glad to take them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Mr. Newlove, do you have any questions?
I do not at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Katz, do you have any questions?
I do. Just a, just a couple of questions. So, the first question I have is, is the proposed use, the proposed light industrial use as a car wash, is this a sort of car wash that is really specific to the dealership? Like, the dealership is going to be washing the cars when they service them? Or is this a public car wash, just pull off the highway and find your way to the car wash in this low-traffic neighborhood?
No, it's intended to be an adjunct to the dealership.
Got it. And then, the, I took a drive-by on, on the road just to kind of get a sense of, of where this is. And I'm not really good at gauging distance. How, how far from the road is the current structure that's there now?
Let me think. I'm going to say that it's probably, the front porch might be 30 feet back. So, it's, yeah.
So, it would, it would pull it about 10 feet closer to the road from where it is now, approximately?
At, at least for the front porch, yes.
Okay. And then, you know, I tried to get a, just a feel of the, of the neighborhood and although admittedly, it is zoned for, for light industrial, there are several single-family homes right around, including what looked like two single-family homes, you know, right across the street. Was there any solicitation of input from the neighbors? Is there any sense of whether anybody's bothered by this?
The property, actually, if I just look quickly, there are two properties across the street, yes. We did not contact the neighbors. In fact, Ms. Sikati does own one of the properties. It's a vacant lot that's diagonally across the street. And then, the other properties, at least one or two are rental properties. And then, again, further down on Pershing Street, you have the landscape company. I think they've been in front of the zoning board previously.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Mr. McDonough?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Patterson?
Just wanted to clarify with Mr. Schuster. If you, you're going to have a, you said there's going to be an access road from the dealership to the new building, which would further eliminate any traffic on that road?
That's correct. There's a 20-foot wide connector that's shown on the plan, that's proposed. This would, again, have to go to the planning board, but there's going to be, there is a proposed boundary line adjustment. And then, Tim is circling where the connector would be between the dealership and this car wash, yes.
And the intent of that is obviously to keep the traffic to the area of the dealership, not on the main road.
Correct. It would, they would not, they don't expect to go onto the road. They're all going from property to property, yes.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Ms. Mercer?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at the site plan and I guess I'm, I'm having trouble understanding exactly what the hardship is. I understand that it's a unique property and it's not very deep, but looking at the wetlands, it's all in floodplain. What, what's really preventing it from being pushed back an additional 20 feet or situated on the property so that it could be within the correct setback? Because it, it looks like there's room to the stream, but I'm not seeing if there's, if there's a wetland buffer or something that's preventing that on here.
I, I think there was a prior map that was on the screen. There are wetlands there, but it would require, the way the stream runs through, it would angle the building that simply would make it impractical to try to set it back in part of it, but not the rest of it. And this way, it can simply be parallel to the road, but there's a shot there. Now, that says, yeah, it says 52 feet from the house, but that's not what shows.
No, that's, sorry, just to clarify, that, that's, this is Tim. Yeah, that, that was just a little marking. I, I'm, I'm measuring about 40 feet from the front of, what I think is the front of the porch to the edge of the pavement. That doesn't mean it's 40 feet from the front lot line, but anyway.
But what's the distance behind the building? The allowable space, they would have to push it back further? There's, is there just not enough space for them to push it back so that it could be 40 feet? That's what hasn't been explained.
That there's not enough space because you do have the stream, you have the blue line, you have the wetland area there. And to, to simply move the building away from that allows a lot more protection of that area as well as a, a much easier access between the two properties. By bringing it forward, you can see the other houses in that area are also relatively close to the road. And so, this would simply match the rest of the neighborhood and give a much bigger buffer to the wetland area in the rear. Again, there's, there's an effort to protect that area and there would really be very little to distinguish this distance from other buildings on, you know, in that neighborhood.
Tim, could you go back to the one where you were showing the wetlands?
They're on this screen, but it's difficult to see. I can, I can, I can.
I think if you turn off the satellite, yeah, right, that one. So, what is the blue line? I'm looking at it really small. That is the stream?
Yes, there's a plan that's included in the package that shows that running through. It's obviously not a straight line. It meanders behind the building.
And so, Tim, what's the distance between the building and the stream? You know, say at the middle of the building there, for some perspective? Because I still am not getting an answer to that question. What is the distance or the space available behind the building to build so that it could stay 40 feet back?
Jen, this is Tim. You're, you're asking the, the distance from the existing building to what, what we're showing as wetlands on our GIS?
That would give me some perspective, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, this, this can be off, but, but just using this, taking this as is.
Because I don't see it on the, on the drawing. I'm looking at the drawing submitted and I don't see.
Yeah, I'm wondering.
I don't see a measurement line on there either.
I mean, it's, it's a scaled plan, so I'm wondering if, I, I don't have a full-size copy of the plan in front of me. I only have an 11 by 17, but it should be, it's measurable. The, the distance from the existing building to the wetland is measurable based on this plan. I just don't have a full-size copy in front of me.
But can you measure it on the screen right there or not?
I can. I don't, I'm, I'm assuming the plat is, is a lot more accurate, but I'll, but using this, using the GIS, what it shows is from the back, the back portion here, just a straight line back is 30 feet approximately. But let me, but let me turn on the aerial quickly. That'll, I think that'll be slightly more accurate. Yeah. Let's see. It, it, based on the information, the city's information, the wetland is about 30 feet to the rear of the existing home, measured from the, from the rear of the, the back deck.
And is all 30 feet of that buildable? I mean, there's nothing preventing them from building up to the edge of that or do they need to be a certain distance from that?
It's, no, they don't. It's, it's a low, it's, it's not, has not been deemed a high or very high-value wetland for the city's purposes. So, there is no buffer around that wetland. Did you, there's nothing to prevent construction up to the edge of the wetland.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Mercer?
No, I have no additional questions.
I think, Mr. Heffer, if I may?
Yeah?
I, I think in terms of balancing the protection of the wetland and the, whatever impact the reduced setback has, I believe that from the design standpoint, the desire was to minimize the impact at the rear and balance that off with whatever impact would be for a smaller setback in the front. And given the neighborhood, given the connector road between the two properties, it was felt that protecting the back just made more sense and, and also eliminating a nonconforming use. So, it may be possible to build somewhat further back, but it really made no sense to disturb that area and just try to keep it in its natural state. Thank you.
Mr. Schuster, this, this is the chairman, Will Koppenheffer. When you say this car wash is going to be adjunct to the dealership, does that mean that only the dealership will be using this? It's not open to the public?
That's the intent of the, yes.
I mean, you, your client would have no objection to a condition that the public, it won't be open to public sales of car washes?
I, my understanding is that if you bring your car in for service, you get it cleaned and spiffed up and washed and detailed, then you drive off with, after your oil change, and that's the purpose of it.
I, I understand that's the purpose, but what I'm asking you is a different question. Will
I can't answer.
Will Lebanon Volkswagen and Volvo wash my car if I just drive up there and pay them whatever they're charging?
No, that's not, that's not.
Are they going to be doing that?
No, I, I don't think that they're going to welcome that, the, the public in there.
All right. So, would they have any objection to us putting a condition on it? It's not open to?
Are you still there? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. You, you, could you cut out for a second? You're saying a condition?
Would there be any objection to a condition that it's not open to the general public? Independent, independently of getting service at the dealership?
I, I think if that condition were a reflection of the, if, if that can, there would be no objection if that condition arose from the reduced setback.
What does that mean?
If, because there's a reduced setback, there's no desire to have the public in there, then, then that certainly, there's a nexus between the condition and the setback. I, I don't think there's an objection to that and the board can certainly do that. I just ask what the connection between limiting the public, I do see. I do see that the, the primary access is from the Miller Building, the Miller Auto Dealership. So at this point, the way it's laid out, the only way you do get into the property is through the Miller Auto Dealership.
Well, I'm looking at this plan, and isn't that an entrance to the off Little Heater Road?
I think that's an exit.
Isn't that an access point off the Little Heater Road?
Yes, it's how cars leave the building.
The whole, the whole point I'm asking of limiting is, is to eliminate traffic on a very small road.
Understood.
Okay. This building that is going to be 60 by 120 feet for a car wash, I think is going to be bigger than all of the other car washes in Lebanon combined. I look at Jake's and I'd estimate that to be 30 by 30. I'd look at the one over on, by the weather vane. It's about the same size. This is a gigantic car wash. And I can understand encroaching on the setback if you absolutely had to. But the only reason you have to encroach on the setback is because you want to build this, well, excuse me, your clients want to build this Taj Mahal car wash. So why doesn't it make sense to, as Ms. Mercer said, push the building back a little bit and cut down on the size a little bit and go from there?
Well, I do disagree with your estimates of size on the, on car washes. And I look at Jake's, and that's a rather long building that runs the entire length of the property. I can't tell if it's 60 feet or longer, but it's certainly a rather lengthy building. So I think that it's probably comparable to other car washes, but it does run, you know, along, a parallel to the road. So it's 60 feet is wide enough, you know, for equipment and several cars.
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Nash.
I don't want to argue with you.
Mr. Chair, this is Dan Nash. Could I add some points about the car wash?
No, you can't, Mr. Nash, because you're a member of the public at this point, and we haven't opened it up to the public.
I'm representing the applicant.
Mr. Chair, it's Al Patterson.
Wait, wait, wait. Mr. Patterson, hang on a second. Go ahead, Mr. Nash.
This is not your typical car wash where you drive through and you have brushes. This is more of a detailing garage. You can see all the doors on the side where the connector is. This is made for multiple cars to go in there and for the detailers to do their magic to make the car look pretty again. On the left side of the building, we have the parking for employees. There's also another access there. I'm not sure what the purpose of that is, but the primary purpose on the right-hand side is for your detailing, and it's made to handle multiple vehicles with multiple detailers working on the vehicles.
The chair is, I can't hear anything that's being said.
Mr. Chair, are you there?
Let's, is he, oh, this is Tim. Hold on a second. Let's see. Bill is off. The chair is off the meeting, so let's, I assume he's going to try to get back in in a second here. Jen, do you want to, do you want to pick up the baton?
I can either take over, or we could recess for a minute or two for him to get back.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, let's wait a minute.
We're in the middle of a conversation. If he doesn't get back on, I'll take over.
And please note that I would like to emphasize a couple of things if I could when you're ready.
Okay. And then I have another question as well.
Do you have me on yet, Tim?
Yep.
Yep, there you are.
Okay.
So we, we decided to recess while you got back on. I did not.
I could hear you guys.
Okay, okay.
Could be heard by you.
Apparently you have the train. So we had, so did you hear everything Mr. Nash said and you were starting to speak, I think?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Thank you. Mr. Patterson, you wanted to make a comment just before Mr. Nash finished what he was saying. What is it that you wish to comment on?
I was going to speak on what, basically what he said, and I'm going to echo some of what he said, that this is a detailed shop, which is not simply a car wash. And I think Jake's is a pretty good-sized car wash as well, so I don't know the size of it, but it's certainly not small. One of the other things, I mean, you're going to have, I'm guessing they'll probably be detailing four or five vehicles at a time in there, among other things going on. So it's not as simple as a car wash to wash cars. And, and I don't, as Attorney Schuster explained it, I don't see it being a car wash where I could drive by on my way home from work, pull in and wash my car and leave without having some other service work done at that location. That's kind of how I understood it to be explained. So I think for clarification, that needs to be noted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board?
I have one question. This is Vice Chair Mercer, so.
Ms. Mercer, go ahead.
Thank you. So, so I understand that I wouldn't be able to just drive in there and wash my car, but are these services going to be offered to the public, or are they strictly for the dealership's use? Is this a, is this a new added service and are those parking spots over there? Because that's a lot of parking spots for employees. Are these employees going to be full-time detailers detailing, offering this, you know, so I could go there and make an appointment to have my car detailed? Is this a new service that they're offering?
It's a new service for, for the Miller Volvo dealership, and the parking spaces may be for employees, but also when a car is finished, it may be parked there. Whether it's driven back to the dealership or picked up at that point by the owner, those are all options. But again, it's, it's not, it's for the public, but only the public that is customers of Miller Volvo. That's, that's the purpose. I mean, if your, if your car is fixed or repaired or brand-new, you get it all fixed up and cleaned and ready to go there.
Okay. I have no additional questions.
We still go to Jake's if you want a car wash.
Bill, are you, are you with us? This is Tim. Bill?
Well, I can take over for a second, Tim. Are there any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, we can open it up to the public for comments. I'm hoping that Chair Koppenheffer can either hear us or get back on here. Tim, do we have people, do you want to first of all say the reminder for people who may be wanting to speak from the public?
Sure, just a reminder to please announce your name and spell it so that we can accurately reflect that in the meeting minutes. I think that's all I have.
Hey, is there any, go ahead, Tim.
Oh, I was just going to, it's not, it's not, it's not possible to know with, for certain who's on the, the meeting right now for this application or not.
Okay.
Tim, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay. We, the vice chair had just opened it up to members of the public.
Good.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak for or against, or just ask questions about this application? And I'll turn it back over to Chair Koppenheffer.
Anybody on, on the phone, Mr. Corwin, that you're aware of?
I, no, I don't, I don't see anyone necessarily who's here for this application.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing?
It looks like we do have one person.
Oh, okay.
And Alice?
Oh, hi, yes, this is Alice Dansby. That's D-A-N-S-B-Y. I was just wondering if they're going to, if there's going to be office space in this proposed building?
Mr. Schuster, is there going to be office space in this building?
Not, not in the sense that it's an office building. No, I'm sure there will be some workspace within, whether it's a cubicle for, you know, some administrative work, but it's not an office building, no.
All right. Ms. Dansby, do you have anything else?
I guess I was just looking for clarification on, it sounds like there will be functions in addition to the, the detailing slash car wash work. Maybe a more of a multi-use building. I'm just looking for, at what stage we have clarification on that.
Chair, this is, this is Tim. Just a quick note. There's a bit of a fine line when you, when you analyze, as you're analyzing this, this request, but just keep in mind that the, the use itself does need to be approved by the planning board. The car wash use needs to be approved by the planning board through the conditional use permit process. So what's, what's before the board today is, is just the, the request to place the building closer to the front lot line than is otherwise permitted.
Thank you, Mr. Corwin. Is there anybody else from the public?
This is Vice Chair Mercer. Can we just ask Ms. Dansby, is she in a butter?
I am not in a butter. Thank you.
Thank you. No worries. And it sounds like there'll be more clarity on the function when it goes to, if it goes to planning board, planning board review, so to answer your question.
Anybody else from the public, Mr. Corwin, that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Is there a motion to continue this hearing to June 15th?
I'll make a motion, Al Patterson, to continue this hearing until June 15.
Is there a second?
Hold on, Mr. Patterson recused himself. Can he do that?
No.
Linda, sorry.
I didn't recuse myself from this.
Thank you.
Mr. Nash.
Too many things happening.
Is there a second?
Mr. Patterson seconded, didn't he, or did he make the motion?
I made the motion.
I'll second. This is Jennifer.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let me see. Mr. Katz?
I vote yes.
Mr. McDonough?
I vote yes.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote yes.
Ms. Mercer?
I vote yes to continue this.
And I will make it unanimous. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing in the matter of Lebanon Housing Authority applicant Embane Stevenson, property owner, 258 Heater Road, tax map 64 lot 7, zoned RO1. Applicant requests a special exception pursuant to Article 3, Section 311a.2 of the zoning ordinance to construct a multifamily dwelling containing 44 dwelling units. Is there somebody here representing the applicant?
Yes, hello, this is Megan Carrier. Did I successfully unmute myself? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, sorry. I think I was not unmuted for a second there. So this is Megan Carrier. She and Finney.
Dude, dog in the background?
Sorry.
You've got a lot of feedback.
Okay. Is this any better?
Start speaking and we'll see.
All right, is it, I moved my computer a little.
Okay, that's, yeah, that is better.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so my name, M-E-G-A-N-C-A-R-R-I-E-R. I am on, I'm here on behalf of Lebanon Housing Authority. I am attending tonight with Dita Alonso of the Lebanon Housing Authority, Jeff Merritt of Granite Engineering, and Jerry Weebolt of Right Track Design. And we'd like to start tonight by having you a bit of information on the proposal, and then Jeff is going to pass it back to me for a summary of the special exception criteria.
Before you go, before you go any further,
Sure.
Ms. Carrier, would you spell the names of, of the other people who are with you?
Sure. So Dita Alonso is D-I-T-H-A-A-L-O-N-S-O. Jeff Merritt is J-E-F-F-M-E-R-R-I-T-T. And Jerry, Jerry Weebolt is J-E-R-R-Y-W-U-E-B-B-O-L-T.
W, I'm sorry, W? O-L-T. Okay, good.
Also, Mr. Chair, this is Tim. Can you appoint a, an alternate to sit on this case as a voting member?
Sure. Let's see, Mr. Katz and Mr. McDonough, you were on the last here. Mr. Newlove, I'll appoint you to this hearing. Is that okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, so.
And this is one last interruption. This is Linda Billings. When the other people speak, Dita, Jeff and Jerry, I need to know what organizations they're representing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff, if you're there and able to unmute yourself, I will pass the baton to you.
Sure. Good evening to the board. For the record, my name is Jeff Merritt, representing the Lebanon Housing Authority.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
You, you are coming through like Darth Vader. Could you step back from your microphone or move your computer like Ms. Carrier did?
Try that.
Nope. Try it again. Mr. Corwin, how's it coming?
It's, it's getting worse. Let me mute everyone. Okay, so I've muted everyone. I see Jeff is leaving and I assume he will try coming back.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay, so we just switched computers here to someone else in the, in the office. So I'll be showing up as Brent Cole, but really I'm Jeff Merritt. But we're both from Granite Engineering, and we're representing the applicant this evening, Lebanon Housing Authority. Let's see if I can share my screen here. Can everybody see this?
Bill, you may, Bill, you're muted.
We can see it.
Okay, great. I'm going to start with the, the existing conditions plan. This is a survey of the property, a record survey of the property. This property is located at 258 Heater Road. It has frontage both on Heater Road right here, Old Etnot Road right up here. The property is roughly 3.37 acres in land area. Right now, the property is undeveloped. This plan actually shows it with a house on it. You can see it in this corner over here. So the house, the, the property was previously developed, but it's since, that house has since been torn down. So the house, the, the property was previously developed, but it's since, that house has since been torn down. Based on aerial imagery, it looks like that house was torn down 2008 or 2009. This property is located entirely within the R01 district. To the north of us, or across Old Atona Road, there is a number of residential homes, as well as some significant number of multifamily developments in that area of the, of the city. That is also, excuse me, that is the R1 district, and again, we're in the R01. So Old Atona Road is the zoning district boundary between the R01 and the R1 district. To the east of our property, you can see this little slivery here, this was a piece of land that was added to the hospital property. And so, um, to the east of us is actually the access road to the hospital, and it's the access road that comes off of Old Atona Road.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm very sorry to interrupt, this is Tim, is, 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 can everyone see the screen? I, I think at least one of the board members is not able to see it.
Tim, this is Will Koppenheffer, I see it.
I see it.
This is Dave Willough, I see it.
Dan Max, I see it.
Okay, thank you, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to address, I, I believe Al is not able to see the, the screen.
It's the last sheet in the packet, if you can look at the packet.
I can see the packet, but I also would like to see what we're viewing as well, but I can't, so, continue on.
They're showing the last sheet in the packet.
Uh, Jeff, this is Tim, you're, you're muted, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, I got it here, um, I'm sure I, I can get it, if anybody can see it, it sounds, I'm not sure why someone's listening, I'm sorry. I can try to stop cheering and then cheer again, maybe that'll fix it.
May, maybe if you try that, then I'm gonna mute everyone again, see if we can fix this sound issue. Are, are others hearing the sound issue?
Yes.
Okay, I, I muted everyone, um, Jeff, if you can unmute yourself and, and continue with your presentation, I apologize for the technical difficulties we're having.
That's okay, I need, I share the screen again, I'm sure at least the majority can see the, uh, screen.
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff, I apologize, we're just, you're, you still sound like Darth Vader.
So, so you may want to have them dial in on a phone for the audio, they can still stay on the computer, pardon me there.
Yep, that's a good idea. Jeff, this is Tim, are you?
Yeah, yeah, you guys give us one second, we can dial in on a phone.
I may have to dial in too.
No, when you mute everyone, you're fine, Tim, it's something else, there's some interference somewhere.
Jeff, do you wanna try, this is Tim, do you wanna try one more time, and then if it doesn't work, maybe just give a call into the conference line?
Okay, hey, is the audio, is the audio any better?
No.
Okay, let us call in, okay?
Yes.
You may have to let them in, Tim, if they end up in the waiting room.
Right, I, I've got my eye on it.
Okay. Can you tell I do this every day, all day?
Hi, this is Jeff, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Do I still sound like Darth Vader?
No.
Well, there we go.
You sound completely normal.
I don't go that far, but. Alright, so you can still see the screen, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. So, again, uh, this is a property, 3.37 acres, located at 258 Heater Road. To the east of us is the driveway for the hospital, and that is in the general commercial zoning district. Across Old Atona Road is the R1 zoning district, that's a residential zoning district. In this particular area, we have both, uh, single-family homes, as well as a significant number of multifamily homes within that R1 district. Heater Road, which is to our west, uh, is right here, and across the street from us, uh, from Heater Road is the ball field for the high school, so that is developed, but it's for, uh, the high school. That district is the R3 district. And then finally, to the south of us, where you see this house, uh, that is now the gravel parking lot for the school, that's one of their overflow parking areas. That is located in the same zoning district as us, that's the R01 district. We have prepared for the board, um, a few other drawings, this is a site plan that our office put together, which illustrates the proposal for the development of the property. What we are proposing.
Can you just reference which drawings those are in the packet for anyone who can't see your screen?
Yep, this, uh, drawing is prepared by Granite Engineering, and it is titled Zoning Board of Adjustment Site Plan. Project name Heater Landing Apartments. And this is a two-dimensional, uh, plan showing our layout on the property and what the proposal is for the development. We're proposing the construction of a single building, which would have 44 apartment units in it. This would be a multifamily building. You can see that building, it fronts on both Heater and Old Atona Road. The property in and of itself is large enough to support 47 units based on the density calculations that are allowed for this district, and for this particular property, but we're proposing only 44, uh, on this property. We are, like I mentioned before, within the R01 zoning district, and multifamily is allowed in the district, but it's allowed via special exception, and of course, that is why we are here tonight. You can see from the plan that the building has been positioned at the Heater Road, Old Atona Road intersection. The building angle has been developed to specifically fit this corner, you can see how we fit the building to kind of match the, uh, intersection angle. Access to the property will be from Heater Road only via a single curb cut. There will be no access for vehicles off of Old Atona Road, only Heater Road in a, in a single curb cut in that location. To the rear of the building, you can see a proposed parking lot, uh, based on the parking requirements for multifamily. This use in this particular development will require 66 parking spaces. This plan shows a 69 space parking lot, which includes five handicap parking spaces near the building entrance. You can see from the plan that the parking lot is behind the building, as viewed from Old Atona Road. So again, Old Atona Road's right here, uh, the building sits between Old Atona Road and, uh, the parking lot to the rear. Similarly, off of Heater Road, uh, a good portion of the, the road, uh, the building is, obscures the parking lot to the rear of the building. From Heater Road, the closest bit of parking is about 125 feet, from this handicap parking area to Heater Road. And then, a lot of the parking is well, um, at a greater distance than 125 feet, all the way up to about 264 feet here in the back. So we are a significant distance away from Heater Road, and blocked by the building, uh, from Atona Road, from Heater Road, and then also by an area of jurisdictional wetlands. We have had this property delineated, um, and there is a pocket of jurisdictional wetlands on the property, and that will be located, again, between Heater Road and the parking lot to the rear. Also on the site layout, you will see a small building in the very, uh, rear of the parking lot, that is a proposed maintenance shed, and then it has a, um, a trailer parking area right next to it, and that's for the Lebanon Housing Authority's maintenance crews. And then adjacent to that, there is an area designated for, uh, dumpsters, uh, which would, uh, be a place for the residents to, get rid of their trash. The project's also going to include the construction of a pedestrian walk, uh, which would build sidewalk along Heater Road. You've been out to the site today, there is sidewalk right at the Old Atona Road, Heater Road intersection, and then it extends along Old Atona Road, and goes down, um, the access driveway to the hospital. Our project would propose to pick up the sidewalk at the intersection, extend it down Heater Road to our site driveway, and then up through our site, uh, up along our site driveway and through our site, for pedestrian access to and from the building. Uh, the other thing we want to point out, and some of you may know this, if you've been by this particular site, there is a bus stop located on our side of Heater Road, right at the Atona, Old Atona, Heater Road intersection. Right now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Merritt? Mr. Merritt? This is Will Koppenheffer, what did you say is located there?
A bus stop.
A but what?
Bus, B-U-S. Transportation, a bus stop.
Oh, oh.
Advanced transit.
Gotcha.
Yes. So, what's there today, um, is essentially just a sign and a dirt pad that people wait for the bus to come. Our project would propose the installation of a new bus shelter, um, similar to the bus shelters that are off of Heater Road near the entrance to the hospital. As far as the architecture is concerned, um, we prepared a few renderings of the building on the property to try and give the board a perspective of what this building would look like on the property. This first rendering, uh, that I have on the screen, um, it's called Heater Landing Intersection, it's probably in your package. It is a view of the building as you look at it from the intersection, so looking across the intersection towards the, um, towards the building. And you can see from the picture that this is a three-story building, and then it has a very prominent focal point in the, in the center of the building, which defines the entrance, uh, to the facility. There's an entrance that faces both the Heater Road, Old Atona Road intersection, as well as one that faces, um, the parking lot. And in this rendering, you can see the intent to, um, provide pedestrian access. Again, there's an existing sidewalk along Old Atona Road, we would be extending the sidewalk down Heater Road, and you can even see on our plan that, uh, we are proposing the bus shelter there in, in front of our building. And our front entrance would connect to that sidewalk system, um, providing pedestrian access. And then, the next rendering we have for the board, this is the Heater Road view. So this would be if you were driving north up Heater Road, and the site was on your right. You can see the, uh, side of the building, and then the portion of the building that faces Heater Road. And again, you see the intent to connect the sidewalk network into our site, um, and to the transit, uh, authority's, uh, bus stop. And then finally, this is just a bird's eye view of the site plan. Kind of gives you a perspective of what is pavement versus what is building versus what is, uh, grass. And it shows the access off of Heater Road, uh, the parking arrangement that we proposed, our L-shaped or angled building that faces the intersection, and then it even shows the, uh, approximate location of the accessway for, or the driveway for the hospital. So we do think that the development will be attractive, and it will certainly serve a need in the community. Um, I'm going to turn the presentation back to Attorney Carrier, uh, to run through the special exception criteria that was submitted to the board, um, but I will certainly hang around and answer questions after that, uh, that the board might have relative to the site plan.
Thank you, Jeff, this is Megan again, do I sound like Darth Vader?
No.
Oh, you're good. Thank goodness. Alright, so, um, I'm just gonna zip through the special exception criteria. The ordinance sets forth nine criteria, A through I, and we addressed each criterion in our application materials, but I'd like to address each one tonight, um, I'll be as thrifty as possible, uh, with time, but I would like to be sure I've fully addressed how the proposal satisfies these elements. So, for element A, um, which requires that the special exception be authorized by the ordinance, this special exception is authorized by Section 311A.2 of the ordinance, uh, which permits multifamily dwelling complexes consisting of five or more units in the R01 district. Element B, uh, requires that all special conditions required of the special exception have been met. And in this instance, the applicant's proposed use must comply with all of the applicable requirements of Section 601 of the ordinance, and it does, in this case. The first applicable requirement is 601.2, which provides that adequate parking must be provided, that the parking area cannot occupy the front yard, and that the parking area has to be screened from abutting properties. Here, the applicant has proposed 66, well, they've proposed adequate parking, um, 66 spaces are required, and the applicant has proposed 69 spaces, including five handicap spaces. The parking area is not located in the front yard, which is the area, as Jeff pointed out, abutting Heater Road and Old Atona Road. I think as Jeff explained, that they created the L-shaped building on purpose to ensure that the parking lot would not abut either of those roads. In terms of screening, I think Jeff went over a lot of this, um, the, there are two, the two private home dwellings across Old Atona Road will not be able to see the parking lot because the building itself will block that. The, to the east, there's the access road to the hospital. Across Heater Road is the Lebanon High School ball fields, and then to the south, there's the gravel overflow parking area, um, for Lebanon High School. So with the combination of the, the jurisdictional wetlands that Jeff pointed out, um, as well as, um, plans to include fencing or lines of vegetation that grow nicely to create a wall, um, for example, hemlocks, the applicant is, is really willing to do any sort of landscaping necessary to adequately block those, the parking lot from those sites. Third, Section 601.3 provides that the impermeable coverage plus unpaved parking and driveway areas cannot exceed 65% of the lot area, and the proposal does satisfy that requirement. Section 601.4 relates to density, and based on the square footage of the property, the applicant is limited to a total number of 47 units, and they have proposed 44 units. And finally, Section 601.9 requires that the project undergo site plan review, um, which will happen in this case. Moving on to element C, there are no existing violations of the ordinance on the property. Element D, the character of the area will not be adversely affected. There are actually a, a number of multifamily dwelling complexes with more than five units in the, the more residential area to the northwest of the property. At, at least six of them are located within a mile of the property, there's the Stone Farm Apartments, the Wolf Run Apartments, the Ivy Place condominiums, the Boulders condominiums, the Quarry Hill condominiums. the Boulders Condominiums, the Quarry Hill Condominiums, and Timberwood Commons. So because the proposed use is pretty consistent with the character of the area, we don't believe that it could adversely affect it. Element E, the proposed use will not create a hazard or nuisance. You know, as, as Jeff described to you, this is, this is a dwelling complex. It's not overly large for the area. It's aesthetically pleasing, and will undergo site plan review and comply with all of the applicable regulations. So we don't believe there's any reason to expect that it will create any kind of nuisance or hazard. Element F, the proposed use will not adversely affect the capacity of community facilities and services. The applicant has already engaged in some discussions with planning department staff surrounding traffic, and it doesn't appear that traffic will be a concern. But the project will undergo a full technical review by the, by city engineering staff and planning staff during the site plan review process.
Attorney Carrier?
Yes?
Attorney Carrier, this is Will Cuppenheffer. What's the target market for these housing units? And doesn't that, and doesn't that make a difference in terms of the traffic that you can expect?
So the target market meaning who the units will be, who will be occupying the units?
Yes.
Um, so I, I mean, I can tell you that the majority of the units will be one-bedroom units, and so I think taking that into account, we, we don't expect a significant increase in the traffic in the area. I believe that the current proposal is 31-bedroom units, 11 two-bedroom units, and three three-bedroom units. So Jeff can correct me if I've gotten that wrong. But taking that into account, I, I don't think that we're going to be, that we're, we expect a, a significant increase in traffic in the area. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, excellent. All right, so that's actually also relevant to the school question, which I know comes up a lot in the context of multifamily dwelling units. And, and because most of the units will be one-bedroom units, which are not frequently rented by families with school-aged children, again, we, we don't think that there will be a significant impact on the school system. Element G, the granting of the special exception will not result in undue municipal expense. While the proposed use will use municipal water and sewer services, the mechanisms for access to those services are already in place, so there won't be any expense associated with establishing access. The applicant has also discussed sewer issues with planning department staff, and while staff has informed the applicant about the sewer impact fee, staff has not raised concerns about the proposed use's impact on the sewer system. Element H, the use will be developed in a manner compatible with the spirit of the ordinance. So based on the fact that there are similar uses on nearby properties, and the fact that this is actually the only district where a project like this, new construction, multifamily dwelling with more than five units, this is the only district where that type of project is possible absent a variance. So we believe that the proposed project is precisely in line with the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, and that this site is really the, the right spot for this type of development. And finally, element I, the general welfare of the city will be protected. The proposed use will comply with all setback regulations, construction regulations, and all zoning regulations in the ordinance. The applicant doesn't anticipate that the proposed use will unduly impact any city resources or services. However, it does intend to work with the planning department staff and the planning board as it proceeds through the site plan review process to ensure that any impacts are mitigated if necessary. And actually, again, Jeff went over a lot of this. We actually anticipate that the city and its residents will benefit from this development in a number of ways. It will provide much-needed affordable housing inventory in the city and county. The applicant is currently proposing three accessible units, one one-bedroom, one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom, which I understand are, are pretty sorely needed in the area. The applicant will be, does intend to contribute to the improvement of the bus stop located on the corner of Heater Road and Old Etna Road. And the applicant anticipates that construction of the proposed use will result in improved sidewalk circulation and access. So, oh, in addition, the, the use will add to the city's tax base. This housing program is not exempt and will pay taxes. So that's all I've got. If you have any questions, we would be glad to take them.
Thank you, Attorney Carrier. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, this is David New, this is David Newlove. I have some questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Newlove.
So when we talk about a hazard or nuisance, so I have a friend who actually lives on 13 Old Etna Road, which should be directly across the street from that, and the traffic on Heater Road is atrocious. Is there any way that the exit can be moved to the access road for the DHMC facility? Because I know when you even leave the DHMC facility, it won't even make you, you can't even take a left-hand turn. The traffic gets so backed up there. Is there, have we thought about doing that? Because I think we're just adding to this traffic nightmare on that street.
So we did look at, this is Jeff Merritt with Granite Engineering. We did contemplate that the, the, one of the major issues there is that that section of driveway is private. It's not, it's not a public right-of-way. So we don't have the rights to, to cross onto it. We did particularly, we did find a spot on Heater Road which would give us ample site distance. Attorney Carrier mentioned that we had some preliminary discussions with city staff relative to traffic and what they wanted to see in terms of a traffic study that will be looked at during the site plan process, but there were no major concerns, particularly given this particular use. You know, it's not a extremely large trip generator during the peak hours. So while there may be some additional traffic, it should be relatively minor. And again, that would all be reviewed as part of the planning process, that's for sure.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else from the board?
I have a question. It's Al Patterson.
Go ahead, Mr. Patterson.
My question is for, I believe it's Attorney Carrier. She spoke of, I guess they both referenced the bus stop. If you look at both of the images, the bus stop will be offloading and loading, obstructing traffic, which is gonna create a significant hazard to that intersection area, and then thus blocking the, the line of sight as you're traveling, if you will, up Heater Road. So that, to me, is gonna be a significant problem. It didn't show any designated pull-off area. And also, I'm just curious as to, you referenced affordable housing. I guess I have a question on the, the rent and what you are considering affordable, because that's a buzzword that's used every time someone wants to build something in Lebanon. And unfortunately, some people's idea of affordable and what is actually gonna be represented is, is extremely different. So if you could elaborate on that.
Certainly. This is Megan. I think I can answer both of those questions. As to the bus stop, my understanding is that the bus stop actually already exists. It's just, it does not have a shelter. So the only thing that we're proposing is adding the shelter, improving it so that people waiting at the bus stop have something to stand underneath. But we're not adding a bus stop that doesn't already exist.
I will, I just want to interrupt for a minute. That is correct. However, it obstructs traffic when they let people on and off. And if you're gonna increase the usage of that bus stop, it's gonna increase that hazard. That's my point.
Okay, yep, I, I understand that point. Jeff, did you have anything to add on, on the bus stop issue before I move on to the affordable housing issue?
Yeah, ju- just quickly, I guess two things. One is the, kind of the layout for the proposed bus stop. That is taken from the existing bus stop shelters and, and their orientation and location that are near the entrance to the hospital. So if you're familiar with the entrance to the hospital, there is a sidewalk on either side with a bus shelter adjacent to the sidewalk and no pull-off for the buses. So this bus stop was mirrored after one of the local bus stops, the recent ones that had been installed. So we, we were essentially, you know, moving forward with what had been done in the area previously. I would also add to it that, you know, a comment like that, that, you know, it will be certainly reviewed by the engineering department and the, and the planning board as well if that prototype or those prior installations have issues. And both the Transit Authority and the city don't like the configuration. We would work with the city and the Transit Authority to come up with something that would work for everybody. But again, we are essentially following suit with what's already been done in the immediate area.
Okay, I'm just, just, I'm a retired police officer and dealt with some of the issues surrounding exactly what I'm talking about. So my, my concern is, is that with the school there, the school kids that utilize that area already, if you lower the line of sight and you obstruct traffic, people do drive around the bus when they stop, seen it, then in front, behind people that do it, and it creates a hazard. I mean, that's a whole nother issue, but... So you wouldn't probably be opposed, would they be opposed if there was a condition added that they had to make a, a pull-off so they didn't block the line of sight?
I think we'd wanna talk with the engineering department and the Transit Authority. I, you know, my, my belief is that they have a reason for why they have been building them without the pull-off. I wouldn't want to agree to that simply to the fact that I'm not sure they would agree to that orientation. So maybe during the planning and, the planning and the review process with the city, we could endeavor to get further along in that design and see if this, this orientation that we're showing is adequate for them, or if, like you said, there needs to be some sort of widen shoulder or something like that. I don't dismiss your comments. I fully understand what you're saying. We're looking to make this a very safe place for everybody. I just wouldn't want to agree to something that may be contrary to what the Transit Authority would allow. But if you'd afford us the opportunity to get to planning, we could certainly look into that.
Okay, I'm just, in regards to reference E, I'm just, the, the no hazard or nuisance will be created. I just am trying to get around that, because I, if, if the bus stop is designed as it is, it clearly will create that. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Carrier, Mr. Patterson had, I think, the question about the affordable housing that you were going to address.
Right, that's correct. So the rent on these units will not be set based on the resident's income, but the applicant is proposing what's called tax credit housing, which means that the resident's income has to fall within a certain range based on the number of individuals in the household. So while the, the particular range will sort of differ, as an example, what we're looking at is incomes of roughly 19,000 to 51,000 for a single-person household, or 22,000 to 59,000 for a two-person household. So the, the types of residents that, that we're anticipating are maybe an individual who just graduated from college and took an entry-level position, or a single parent with a child who works at the Heater Road Clinic or at one of Lebanon's retail stores, just to name a few examples.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? All right, hearing, hearing, no further questions from the board. Mr. Corwin, are you aware of anybody from the public who wishes to be heard on this matter?
I don't see anyone. There's one or two phone numbers I don't recognize, but other than that, I don't, I don't see anyone. Robert Meyer? He's here. I don't know who that is.
Excuse me, is this, is it open for public input at this time?
Yes.
Okay, this is Alice Dansby, A-L-I-C-E-D-A-N-S-B-Y. I have a few questions. With the affordability we were just discussing and the 19,000 to $51,000 income bracket, is, does that mean that for a single person making $19,000 a year, that the rent would then be roughly 30% of that? And I, I don't know if you'd like me to wait and ask my other questions after you answer that?
Well, why don't, why don't you go ahead and ask all your questions, and then we'll put those questions to the applicant.
Okay, great. One, the next one is, I guess, a concern slash comment. It was mentioned that this would not negatively affect the character of the existing area. I am concerned that this would affect the high school, which, you know, a decade ago had trees, you know, lining at least two of its borders, and that has been greatly reduced over time. And I see this being so close to the street and not opened by any trees, it seems, as being a negative impact on the character of the high school and what you see from the fields. But also, I, it seems like you could, if, if I'm correct, you could actually see this from the high school building. And that, that seems to be quite a change in, in what the high school is, is used to seeing. And then my final question, I guess, is, it was mentioned that this meets a need of the community, and I just wanted to know what that is. It sounds like it's, the, the proposed answer is that it, it provides housing, but I'm, I'm interested to know what, what housing needs it meets, because it seems like we have hundreds, if not more than 1,000 units, new construction units in the works that would be targeting the same one- and two-bedroom unit need. And I, I'm concerned that at the price point these are gonna be offered at this project and all of these others that are already in the works, that it's not really addressing the, the housing needs at the income brackets we actually need them at. So I guess that's related to my first question about, you know, can a, is a $19,000 a year income earner going to be paying only 30% of their income? And what, what, what data is it based on that we're saying this, this meets a need of the community for housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Senzi. Attorney Carrier, can you address those three questions?
I can, yes. So I'll start with the, the high school issue with the concern that the building will be visible from the high school and, you know, that trees are no longer there to sort of block that view. And as I mentioned before, the applicant does intend and is willing to include some landscaping to block the view of the parking lot from the high school area. You know, that's, that's definitely something that they're willing to do. There's also the wetlands area that will remain. And I believe that some trees are, are already proposed and were shown on the plan that Jeff had brought up. So Jeff, are you, are you by chance able to, to pull up that, the plan that showed the proposed? Yep, right there. So I, I think as the plan already is, there's, there's already some trees contemplated that will remain. The idea is not to sort of tear everything down in this area. Jeff, did you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, you know, we would endeavor to keep trees where we can. Attorney Carrier is correct, you know, there's a wetland located adjacent to Heater Road, between Heater Road and the parking lot. Because that's jurisdictional, it's an area that we cannot develop and we can't touch. So that in and of itself will remain vegetated. This area, to the very south, you see on the plan, that area, this lot's actually bigger than we need for what we're proposing. So there's an area back here that probably doesn't need to be cleared at all. Our final design will really dictate that in terms of grading and stormwater management, but I would expect that there's an area back here that doesn't get vegetation removed. And then as Attorney Carrier mentioned, the applicant's willing to do landscaping. That is part of the planning board process and the site plan approval process. We fully expect to develop a formal landscape plan and submit that to the planning board as part of our site plan package. We haven't gotten that
Um, we haven't gotten that far, obviously, um, until we can get the special exception, but there is intent to make this, uh, attractive. We certainly are not trying to hide this facility. It's a beautiful facility. We think it's going to look really nice on this property, but we would certainly be interested in adding landscape to soften the facade and to, um, uh, help, uh, blend this parking lot in with the surrounding area.
All right, and in terms of the questions relating to the affordability, um, again, the, the rents will not be set based on the income of the residents. Um, the rents will be designed to be affordable for individuals who are in those brackets of, um, of annual income. So that nineteen to fifty-one thousand for a single person or twenty-two to fifty-nine for a two-person. Um, I, well, I do understand that there is a lot of, um, housing. I know I mentioned that, um, there's a number of other multifamily dwelling, um, complexes that are very nearby. Um, I'm, I'm, my understanding is that there still is a need for housing that is affordable for individuals who are within these ranges of, um, of income. So the, the purpose of the project is to sort of target people in those income brackets and provide housing that is affordable based on what those individuals are pulling in.
Um, if I may make a comment, this is Dita Alonso, D-I-T-H-A-A-L-O-N-S-O, and I am the Director of Lebanon Housing Authority. Um, to answer Ms. Dansby's, uh, uh, question, what's, what people are failing to see, I think, is that the hundreds of units that are being created or in the area are market rent units where rents, if you, if you actually go online and look at some of the rents, there are studios that are being, where they're charging twelve hundred dollars and one-bedroom apartments and some are over from eighteen to two thousand dollars a month. And people in entry level positions that are making, you know, the range of affordability, the range of income, they cannot even possibly begin to afford that. But typically in tax credit housing, a lot of times the rents range somewhere between eight, you know, for a one-bedroom, it could be six fifty to eight hundred. Uh, up to the three-bedroom might be not more than twelve hundred. And the newer market rent units that are being developed all over Lebanon, there are zero, you know, studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms that are, some of them are over two thousand dollars a month. And you can find that out online, and I've actually done a lot of research on it, and it's just amazing. So this truly will be affordable housing for people with, um, you know, low, low to moderate incomes.
Am I, this is, this is Alice Dansby. Is it appropriate to respond? Or ask a follow-up?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just trying to clarify, so, um, are, are you saying that this building will have rents in that range that you just described? Because I, okay, so, and, and could you, could you clarify that? I mean, could you repeat those, those rents just?
Well, the, well, no, well, I'm giving you a range, but as this develops further, there's just much more involved as you establish the, the rents for the building. Um, it depends on, on many factors that, it's too early in the game to know that, but we, we currently have, um, a sixteen-unit tax credit property right here at thirty-one Romano Circle called Romano Place. And our rents range from seven ninety-five to a thousand dollars. And they're mainly one and two bedrooms.
My concern is with new construction, um, significantly newer than Romano Circle, Romano Place, that I, I'm, I guess, could you give an upper limit for what a one, two, and three-bedroom rent would be? Just a high, uh, the highest?
Actually, I'd have to, I couldn't give you that answer tonight, but I, oh.
If, if I can interrupt here, um, this is not the appropriate place to, I mean, we get the idea that it, it is going to be, uh, that the Lebanon Housing Authority wants it to be affordable housing, and I think it is fair to say.
Bill, you're frozen. This is Tim. Let's just give Bill a minute.
Am I reconnected?
Yes.
All right, so are there any other comments, uh, from the public?
You were cut off when you were saying that it's fair to say. This isn't?
Oh, I, I think it's fair to say that at this point, it's, it's not reasonable to expect the Lebanon Housing Authority to put either minimums or maximums on the rents that are going to be asked at, uh, this can, this, uh, development. Am I still there?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that, that's it. So, any other questions from, from the board on this issue? Or should we ask for more comments from the public?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Jeremy. I just have, uh, two quick questions. Um, one, one is, I didn't hear from Alice Dansby, uh, what her address is and whether she's in a butter, and I was just wondering, you know, what, uh, what her specific interest is on this, uh, on this project.
Um, sure, this is Alice Dansby, um, thirty-six West Street. I am not in a butter. Um, I, I guess I would say my interest is in, just in general, overbuilding too fast in Lebanon. It seems like we have a lot of projects in the works that are all addressing the same need and, and being, uh, described as affordable and, and when eventually listed, not, not really falling into the bracket that a lot of people would consider affordable and also not meeting the need of, of a lot of the housing need we need, which is the lower-income hospital and even Dartmouth College employees. I think, uh, I'm, I'm just worried about too much too fast. And so if this is truly going to be affordable for people in a nineteen thousand dollar income range, I think that's one thing, but fifty-one thousand dollars for one person, that's a completely different, uh, group of people. So I'm, I'm just trying to see that we're not flooding our market and building too much too fast at an eventual cost to the taxpayer if these, if these units can't be filled, if their soundset are going to be charged. Uh, and then also, as I mentioned before, just the aesthetic concerns of, and to the character of the high school. Uh, I went, I graduated from the high school. I care a lot about the high school. And, um, I just think that having this not opaque by trees at all is, is a little bit disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And then just the, the, uh, the second question I had is actually for Mr. Corwin, which is, uh, uh, considering that a couple of comments were brought up about the high school, um, it's highly likely that the high school was on the notice list about this proceeding. Can you just confirm that the high school received notice of the proceeding? And if they had an opinion, they were invited to come and give it?
Yes, the, this is Tim. The, the school district was notified. Um, whether or not that notice was received or not, I don't know, but I did communicate with, uh, Corwin Roberts, the school superintendent today, just to make sure that she was aware of the hearing tonight. She said that she was, uh, aware of the hearing and in fact, uh, had, um, spoken with the applicant, um, at some point prior to, to today about the property. So, so yes, the school district was aware, is aware.
Great, great, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Are there any other members of the public, Mr. Corwin, that you're aware of wishing to be heard?
Um, not, not that I'm aware of.
All right, then, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue this hearing to June fifteenth.
Mr. Chair, sorry, this, this is Tim. I, I, I do have one, um, suggest, suggestion slash request. Um, the, um, as, as has been discussed already, section six oh one two B of the zoning ordinance, uh, requires that the, that all parking areas are screened. Um, the, the, the plan mostly, mostly but not completely satisfies that requirement with the placement of the building along the front of the property. Uh, but if there are other measures proposed, such as fencing or additional landscaping, uh, to screen the parking areas that are still visible from abutting properties, which is from, really from any vantage point around the, the perimeter of the site, um, th- those, those measures should, should be specifically identified on the, on the ZBA site plan exhibit that was submitted to the board. So I, I would, um, i- if there are such measures that are proposed to satisfy the section six oh one two B requirement, it's, I, I, from an administrative and, and staff point of view, it's very important that those are specifically identified on the plan that, that the board will be approving, just so that there's no discommunication or uncertainty when this, when this plan goes before the, uh, and no confusion when this planning, uh, when this plan goes before the planning board for site plan review. And, and so I'd ask that to be prepared. And my, my suggestion is that that's prepared and updated and submitted prior to the June fifteenth, uh, hearing, which, uh, meeting at which this hearing will continue.
Attorney Carrier?
Yes.
Are you still there?
I am still here, yep.
Oh, good. Um, can you prepare a, a, a proposed landscaping plan, that the board can review, always keeping in mind that although we can make it a condition, uh, you still have to go for site plan review before the planning board, and they can impose their own conditions. But would you provide us with a proposed landscaping, uh, plan before the June fifteenth meeting?
Right, so I, I do agree with your comment that I think that whatever is proposed, there would need to be an understanding that the planning board might change it, um, through the planning process. Um, in terms of actually preparing something before June fifteenth, I think that that is actually a question for Jeff because I wouldn't, I'm, you probably don't want to see anything that I would put together. Uh, so I don't know in terms of timing whether or not Jeff has the, the ability to prepare something like that in that timeframe. Um, so Jeff, are you able to answer that?
So we could work with a landscape architect to get you a preliminary landscape plan to address the, the screening of the parking areas. Um, I wouldn't want to submit to you a full landscape plan for the entire property until we've, uh, done the final design on it because, you know, where we put, um, utility lines and stuff like that would, would or could dictate how we, um, place landscaping. So if it, if it would satisfy, maybe there's a question for, for Mr. Corwin, but if it would satisfy the requirement, maybe we could identify areas where we would propose, uh, landscape screening on a plan, um, and even perhaps specify, uh, variety of trees to be planted in those screening areas, which would then allow us some flexibility for final design.
Mr. Mayor, I, 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 I want to emphasize that the planning board is, is the agency of expertise when it comes to landscaping in Lebanon. But we just need to have an idea of what it is that you have in mind so that when we send this to the planning board, they can know what our thoughts are. So you don't have to tell us that you're going to plant fourteen red maples, but you do have to tell us where you are going to plant and where you are going to block, or excuse me, screen the parking lot, uh, from neighboring properties. Fair enough?
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a lot simpler than doing a detailed landscape plan. So we can certainly identify on the preliminary site plan that we have there that we've already presented to the board, those areas where we would supplement with landscaping in order to screen the, the parking. That, that would be fine. We could certainly do that for you guys.
And, and this is Tim. That, that, yes, that, that's what I was thinking of. Thank you. Great.
So is there a motion to continue this hearing until, or to, uh, June fifteenth?
This is Jennifer. I move that we continue this to June fifteenth.
Is there a second?
Dave Newlove seconds this.
Before we vote, can I ask a question, please?
Wait a minute, is there any discussion, Mr. Patterson?
Absolutely, yes, thank you. Um, my question is for the, for staff. Uh, Tim, is there, if, can we move forward with a potential condition? Or does that not come until we do the decision?
Not until we do the decision.
Right.
Right, because I'll be honest with you, I'm extremely concerned about the bus stop and the four-way intersection. That's a huge hazard. I can't, I can't even support this with the way that is with that four-way intersection because the bus sitting there is, with all the kids and all that, it's a huge safety issue. So, um, I don't know if we can address that before we move forward or not.
Well, Mr. Patterson, you can't put a condition on the applicant until you've approved what the applicant's asking for. So if it's a deal breaker for you, it may well be a deal breaker for other people, but we're not going to find that out until the next meeting.
No, I get that. That was why I asked the question. I didn't think I could, but I wanted to ask because I'm just trying to give them a chance to address it, that's all.
Fair enough. Uh, any other discussion on the motion? Uh, Mr. Newlove, how do you vote?
Oops, I vote, I hit the wrong button. I vote to continue the meeting till June fifteenth.
Mr. Patterson?
I vote no.
Um, Ms. Mercer?
I vote yes to continue the meeting.
Mr. Katz?
Uh, I'm not voting on this, uh, on this issue, I believe.
It was Dave Newlove.
Yeah, well, I already asked Mr. Newlove. Mr. Patterson?
Mr. Nash?
What?
What about Mr. Nash?
Mr. Nash?
I vote in favor of continuing to the fifteen.
And I vote in favor. So it's four to one. We're going to continue this matter until June fifteenth. The, uh, next item on our agenda is staff comments.
Could I just interrupt for a second? It's Linda, sorry. I've got Mr. Newlove, Mr. Nash, and Mr. Koppenheffer voting yay. Is that Ms. Mercer, you voted yay as well?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
You can always interrupt, Linda.
Get that unmuted button there fast enough.
Um, Mr. Corwin, are there any staff comments?
I do not have any, thank you.
Is there a move to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's Al Patterson.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. It's Dave Newlove.
Um, Mr. Patterson, how do you vote?
I vote, I'm in favor of adjourned.
Mr. Newlove?
I'm in favor of adjourned.
Mr. Nash?
In favor.
Ms. Mercer?
Yes.
And I'll make it unanimous. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
We'll run to fifteen.
Good night.
Thank you very much.